Everyone, welcome to the Tuesday, November 4th Regional School Committee meeting, which is, it is now 6:31 PM and we're going to call the meeting to order. We're meeting via livestream and in person in the middle school library at the Dover Sherburne Middle School. So with that being said, I think Toa may try to join online. She had a doctor's appointment because she's still having some things, so if she could get back home, she was going to join online. She realized she could not make it today. So with that being said, the first thing we have is community comments, if there are any. Are there any on there?
No.
They're on. Okay, well then I guess we'll move along to the Student Council groups.
Evelyn is sick, so she promised a thorough and detailed report at the next meeting.
That's fine. I hope she feels better.
Thank you.
Okay, so superintendent comments.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Happy November. So as you can see, our field hockey team is playing outside on our beautiful turf field, and I understand the score is 1-1. So go Raiders, Sweet 16. So some other updates in the Finance Performing Arts Department. On Sunday, we had the Jazz brunch, and it was a great event. We had all of our jazz ensembles plays and our chorus sing. It was a great event to come together with family and to have some waffles and apple crisp. High School Play is coming up on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:00 PM. They're doing Lovesick, so if anybody would like to come for-
I want to see that. I saw it.
The play. And then the Middle School Musical Wonka is coming up on December 11th, 12th, and 13th, so make sure you get your tickets for that as well. In Athletics, as you know, we had our turf celebration, our opening of the turf on October 26th. That was our opportunity to thank the Dover and Sherburne taxpayers for providing the turf in, what is it?
September.
September.
I'm like, wait a minute. Did I miss the October 26th?
Time is flying. Thank you. Thank you, the Sherburne and Dover taxpayers for supporting the turf and field project, for the MUDG Foundation, DSC TV, and the boosters for the press box and bleachers, Rusty Weight and K Array USA for the beautiful speakers, and the Dover Sherburne team who has worked three years on this project, including Dawn, John, Emily, Cam, Chris, Angie, and Kevin. So thank you for that. Other teams, congratulations to all of our fall teams. Our field hockey team continues tonight versus Foxborough for the Sweet 16. The cross-country train continues to compete and prepare for the divisionals, which will see their request for a field trip later on. And the Boys and Girls Soccer Team continued to play on Wednesday, so the season continues for many of our incredible teams. In terms of community building, we had a Metco bus stop party on Thursday, October 23rd. So several of our school and district administrators went out to Matapan at 6:15 in the morning, and we greeted our Metco students and their parents at the bus stop. And so there was a lot of parents and students waiting at that bus stop to get on, and then the kids who were already on the bus got off. We enjoyed some conversation and some munchkins, and then we sugared them up and put them back on the bus and said, "See you later, we'll see you back at school." And so it was a great opportunity to see the families and interact and to let them know that we recognize the long journey that they take every day. And we promised to do it again, I guess afterwards. They said to Ms. Monique, "When are the adults coming back?" So we'll have some more adults back to visit with them. We had the NHS induction last week as well. We have 68 new inductees. Dr. Caroline Ringel, a former school committee member, was the guest speaker, and she was a great representative from the Dover Sherburne community. She's a former parent and still lives within the community. She's an attorney and has a background in healthcare as well. She teaches at the college and graduate level and had a great, a lot of great insight into talking about, you know, giving back to your community and finding passion and fun in the work that you do. So I think she had a really strong message for the kids. Middle School had their Halloween party, which was super exciting. It was at the same time as one of the games that was on the field, so I guess they enjoyed each other's noise as each celebrated in their own way. We had our homecoming dance last Saturday, which was also a big hit. And middle school parent conferences were the last two Wednesdays. So thank you to all of you who came to chat with your children's teachers, and we're hoping that the fast dating system continues to work for you to be able to touch base with all of your children's educators. FY '26 budget planning is underway, and Dawn will talk about that in a few minutes. Last week, we met with Dover Warrant and Sherburne Advisory, the finance committees from both towns, and Jeff and Angie were there for that. So we're talking to both towns about their outlooks and their advice for how we move forward with the school budgets. And then internally, Central Office, including Dawn, Denny, Kate, and myself, are meeting with all the building principals over the next few weeks to start talking about what the needs are in each building. So we'll be circling back with a Budget 1.0 for you in the near future. Parent safety meetings, per request of the families and in response to our strategic plan, we're holding three safety meetings for each of the districts, just so that we can inform parents and caregivers about the drills and procedures and safety mechanisms we have in place. So we have Chicaring this Thursday, Pine Hill on Friday, and then the regional meeting will be next Thursday evening, and we'll be either going on to a Google meets format or next week, DSC TV will be live streaming for us so that parents who can't make it in person can log in and watch from home, and we'll also be sending out a detailed memo afterwards, sharing the same information. In terms of district goals, Denny and I continue to work with our leadership team, looking at our Open Architects data dashboard and looking at what kind of trends we'd like to look at as a district K to 12, and then formulating a data team and deciding who should be best at that table for the first year through to start looking at that information. All of our principals are working with our teachers on getting teachers into each other's classrooms to learn some instructional strategies, to kind of see where the kids are coming from and where they're going in the grades before and after. And we'll be working as a leadership team on our instructional rounds about working in pairs to get into other buildings, which is, you know, Denny and I have that privilege all the time, but to get the principals into other buildings is super powerful, too. So more to come on that. And other than that, negotiations with the DSEA are underway. Thank you to Jeff and Mary for serving on that committee. We had a meeting October 29th. That was our first meeting with the educators, and we have another one coming up on November 12th. So we will continue to keep you informed as there are milestones to be shared. Happy to take any questions or comments.
I'm glad negotiations already started. It's early, it seems like.
Yeah, back to, back to the normal.
Yeah, yeah, because that one-year cap was a little late, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is nice.
Yes.
Anybody else? No?
When is that, when is that to be finalized by?
There's no end date.
Okay.
Ideally, we'll finalize by March, which is when you find, you know, find, pass your final budget, but it could be earlier, it could be later. But that's the goal, I think, for both sides.
Okay. Well, thank you. Next, we have Dawn for financial reports.
So you have your monthly report of warrants that have been processed. It's a short list because we didn't meet too long ago, and I will say that one of the, the middle large one is capital payments, so we are continuing to pay off sort of our two big projects that have been ongoing. You also have your financial statements as of October 31st. I need to add the little note at the top that all new information is in bold, that I think I cut that out one month because I, one more line, I didn't have to have two pages, so I'll put that back on. But you'll see that the only new information that I'm really bringing forward is that we have estimated our health insurance costs for the year. Again, that's based on enrollment as of right now. The West Suburban Health Group did approve the retiree Medicare supplemental rates. That's on a calendar year versus a fiscal year, so that's what CY means, is calendar year. And as I'm sure you've seen on the news, healthcare premium increases are little, are looking in double digits. So with much debate, the Board of West Suburban approved the retiree plan rates, and most of our subscribers are in medics and the Harvard Pilgrim Plan, which saw a 12.4% and 11.9% increase. So we know that's difficult for our retirees, but unfortunately, it's not only the prescription drug piece that's increasing right now, it's the general medical as well. So they sort of had a double, a double whammy from that standpoint. We do offer options through West Suburban, which, so that does give plans of varying price points. So I think that is, again, one of the better options for us to be in West Suburban Health Group, is that we do have a variety for our employees and retirees to choose from, something to keep in mind as healthcare continues to get discussed. And just highlighting that the fiscal year '26 budget, when we approved it last March, I used an estimate of 9%. So it's not, based on that base of the cost, it's not a huge change, and so you'll see right now, we're still not seeing a negative, because a lot of times, too, throughout the year, we have fluctuations of retirees going from the Medicare, non-Medicare plans to Medicare. That's a savings to us, so it, it sort of fluctuates throughout the year. So wanted to highlight that, and I'm still needing to sort of do some encumbrance for the utility expenses, but we'll try to do that before you see your budget in December, so we have a good basis to roll out fiscal year '27 version 1.0. Any questions on the operating statements? Okay, so just looking at closing out '25, since we last met, we did file our end-of-the-year report with the Department of Ed, so we'll sit back and wait for our compliance audit to be done by our auditors. Our E and D, we're still waiting, I think, we definitely will have it certified. I was hoping we would have it before tonight because they asked us a final question, and we answered it. But we'll definitely have that before we approve budget version 1.0, which is good because you really can't vote to use any E and D against anything if you don't, if you don't have your E and D certified, so that hopefully will be done by December when we meet. And then, again, our auditors will be out here in February. So that's '25. We talked about '26. So moving into '27, we, tonight's an opportunity for our school committee to sort of bring forward any ideas or concerns they have about the budget before administration works or finalizes, and I say finalize loosely, version 1.0. So just to give you a couple of highlights, obviously, Beth mentioned that we've already met with the two towns. They're trying to be very proactive in building the budget, so that we were so dependent on, not our own finances, but the finance of our members, so we have to understand where they're coming from. So that was a good start that we had last week in doing that. Obviously, the contracts that we're negotiating are a huge part of our budget puzzle. Keep in mind, too, I just talked about healthcare. The, some of the towns that have already started their budget building, I will tell you, are using 14% increase, so we were probably go with a number like that to build in. Healthcare is our biggest single light item outside of salaries in our operating, so it, you know, it does have a big impact on sort of the increases that we're going to see in our budget, and it's totally beyond our control. I think West Suburban is doing a really good job of trying to find ways to save money. We're spending, I'm on the steering committee, we're spending a lot more time looking at prescription drug rebate programs, programs that we can offer our employees to keep them more healthy so that the claims are lower. So there's a lot of initiatives going that, on like that, because if you think about the Wellesleys and the NEDX and the Dedems, it's even a larger piece of their budget. Obviously, we're, we're not that dependent on state revenue and grants, because we know there's a lot happening in that arena. It's a very small percentage of our revenue, so I feel like we're sort of insulated from what happens there. But it's, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of changes happening, a lot of increases in expenses, but I think what we try to do is spend this, you know, I say spend smart, but we find ways to get products at lower price. And I think our staff has sort of bought into that, and because I see how we're purchasing things, and I'm, I'm impressed with websites that they're finding for us to find things because they are being cost-conscious, so we've got that going for us. So I don't know if there's anything, you know, school committee only has certain purviews when you're building the budget, but we, we don't want to take, we don't want to have to bring forward the first version and not have any input from you guys if there's something that you're hoping to see or want to see.
So examples in the past, you know, obviously, coming out of the pandemic, social emotional wellness was an important factor for us at the elementary level. Continuing to roll out the new math program and looking at new literacy programs is certainly a priority. So if there's anything at the middle or high school level that you think is a priority, certainly let us know.
I know, Denny, you're already looking at the English program, the ELA program, and I believe Massachusetts, at least, I don't know if they fully passed the bill, but there's a bill for like choosing one of the curriculum from that. So would, so whether the ones you're evaluating fit into that? Either way, it looks like we're going to have to put that into the budget for our new ELA curriculum, right?
Yeah.
That should be mostly the elementary level.
Yeah.
And then it'll have some trickle-up effects in middle school.
Well, I'm just going to have to look, there's a new bill that all students will have to graduate with some financial literacy curriculum, which I think is incredible. I think it's great that that's finally a requirement of our students. And then obviously, we'll have to see what happens with the cellphone bill and what infrastructure that might mean for us next year.
So, well, billing on financial literacy, because I know we're teaching that, there's, we have, what, one course right now?
We have an elective and it runs once in the fall and once in the spring. There was a huge, you know, interest when it first came up from juniors and seniors, and now it's kind of leveled out where, you know, one per semester seems to make sense. So we'll have to read the fine lines of the bill to see if it's, you know, a full elective or if it's going to be integrated into, you know, social studies class and math class. So we're waiting for order.
Because that's what I was going to ask, like, would, you know, be another OTE that we need?
Yeah, we'll have to see.
Okay.
The other thing we talked about with the towns, and we talked about this at a joint meeting, is just our change in our budgeting for out-of-district placements. So that is not a lot of, it's really just changing where the numbers are, where they're sitting in what budget, but that was a big, it's going to be a big change for the towns to undertake, because a big chunk of that activity is going to be here at the region and has to be assessed out to each town based on the student. So it's going to make our assessment calculation look a little off, but I'm just, you know, and it's growing pains to try to figure out how that's going to all play out, but I, we did bring that to the attention of the towns, because it will make the local school budgets look a lot different, because they're only going to be carrying their small piece of out-of-district, where anyone who's in sixth grade through the age of 22 now will be here on the region's books on end-of-year budget, and then obviously, the costs associated with those will be assessed to each town individually. So the region's not assuming any of those costs, we're just going to be assessing the towns, their piece of the cost. But from an accounting standpoint, the Department of Ed, and I agree, it should be really financially reflected here at the region and not at the towns.
Can you do just a quick explanation, because I think, I think the other night was the first time I fully understood, like, the up-to-point that we're responsible, just a quick bare-bones assessment, so that-
Yes, and I'll, and some of those documents that I share will come out with the version 1.0 budget, but basically, for each individual student that goes out of district, a district is responsible for what they call four times the foundation rate. So right now, for fiscal year 50, for '26 cases that will get, placements that will get reimbursed for fiscal year '27, I think it was around like $53,000. So that is the cost to Dover and to Sherburne for any student that goes out of district right off the bat, it's the $53,000. Then we're eligible for reimbursement of anything over the $53,000, but you only get 75%. So then the towns are going to be responsible for the 25% that we don't get, knowing that the 75% of reimbursement actually comes here, and so we won't assess the towns that, because we're going to get that reimbursement and we'll have it to pay the bills. And then you get to add on to that transportation. So if you meet the thresholds and you get tuition, then you get 75% of transportation, but then I, we have to assess the town back to 25%, we'll get the 75%. And then, again, if you don't meet the threshold on tuition, but transportation throws you over, then you do get 75%. It is a calculation that's done on a per-student basis, so you can't just do a quick, here, this is what it is, we'll take 30% of this. We have to calculate it by student, and for our budget purposes, we have to assume what our placements are going to be. So that's, that's where it gets a little tricky. So we will work with a way to make sure that the region has a safety net, because as you know, some of you have been on the locals before, and my reports usually say, well, we budgeted for 12 placements and we have 14 placements, so someone's got to come up with that, that money to pay for it, because we don't get reimbursement until the next year. So it becomes a little more complicated to split it apart, but from a financial standpoint, across the three budgets, it's still the same. It's just where it sits. So I don't want any, you know, and it does take a little bit of some of the financial strategy away from the towns, because the circuit breaker reimbursement that we get is all going to be at the region, versus, as we know, if you sat in Dover School Committee, the town had all that circuit breaker that usually went back to free cash, so it does change that equation a little bit from that perspective. But it will, I can't wait to do it.
And I have the structure of how, like, she broke it down, so I can show that with you all, but I didn't want to do that before it was explained, because I didn't, like I said, it was, it was a lot for me, the light bulb kind of went off, and I said, oh, this is how it works.
Right.
And so I wanted that to be explained before I sent it, because to me, it didn't make sense before, but now it does.
Yeah, so I, right, so I sent those, that, with some of the feedback that I got that night, put a few more things on that exhibit, but that will be part of your budget package, too, so that everyone can understand it. Because even, I'd say, if you're even on Dover and Sherburne, I think we never got to that level of nitty-gritty, and we have to do it now, because I have to explain to the towns what the net cost is and why I have to charge them back the net cost.
Right. It makes total sense, but it's just, it's, the thing, too, is the fact that you're, you're paying it in arrears, you know, like, we're having to come up with the money for, you know.
Right. So that's where the Department of Ed said, maybe you should hold on to as much as you can with the current year circuit breaker-
Right.
-so that you have your cushion. So that's what we told the towns, we might hold a quarter or two of their circuit breaker, so that the region can start having a little safety net for that. It will always be, just so you know, the financials, when we show it, will have Dover, Sherburne, and all of our general ledger accounts will be Dover out-of-district expense, Dover circuit breaker, so everything will be by town as it should be accounted for.
I mean, I think it's great to understand it now, because I didn't until last week, so that's good.
Yeah, yeah.
To any point, Dawn's charts were very clear to walk through scenarios, and I think once you see the shifts in the regional budget versus the Chicaring and Pine Hill budget, it'll make sense, because, you know, as Dawn always says, the bottom line of Dover and Sherburne's budget won't change, it's just where, at what district that money's sitting now. So to see it in context, I think, when we do version 1.0 will be helpful.
Right. And then just thinking that, you know, Dover's budget always goes to the town Dover local budget, like 12 million, well, it's going to go down, and the region's assessment's going to look higher. So that's just the educational piece, so that those, on the outside who don't really know what's happening, don't think there's something, you know, wrong going on, so.
Yeah, that's why I just wanted to explain it in preparation.
In preparation, December, yes, yes. So, so good. If you think of anything, pass it along to Angie, who'll give it to Beth. Our first budget going out the door is going to be Dover School Committee is first, then the region is next at your December meeting, and then Sherburne this year is a little bit later, it's the week after, you guys, just the way that Veterans Day threw off our whole, our whole budget schedule.
Kind of forgot about that until I was reminded by my student, my child.
It's a big financial night, so the next thing we have, actually, is the capital plan, and it's, it turns out to be, it's really a six-year capital plan. I keep forgetting to say six, because Sherburne is the one that actually wants your current year plus five, which makes six. And we're going out of the gate a little earlier this year than normal. Usually, I bring this to you either December and sometimes even as late as January, but both towns are trying to get a head start on their capital budget planning because of the volume of capital projects that are coming, not only from the schools, but also from all the other town departments. And they are, Dover, in fact, has hired the Collins Center to look at their sort of long-range capital planning and help them strategically decide about how to budget for that financing, giving them some insight, because they are looking at multimillion-dollar capital budgets, unlike in the past where I think they were a little smaller. And the region is contributing to that a little bit, because of the age of the buildings here and the projects that we have to do, we're continuing to ask for large sum monies probably for at least for the next three years, so we're playing part of that, playing into a part of that. So we are bringing forward your five-year count, your fiscal year '27 requests in the next five years, but just quickly, before I jump in, just to give you an update, we are in the very, very last stages of our final punch list and our closing-out procedures for both turf and track project and also our rooftop units. Sometimes that closeout takes as long as the project itself. Once those close out, and hopefully it'll be by December, I will show you the final financial picture of those. We did have some small change orders on both. I will tell you, the rooftop unit project, it was a $2 million project, we had a $30,000 change order, so that actually wasn't bad at all, and it was just an unforeseen situation with the curb adapters. I know more about this when I want to know, but it was unforeseen, so it was something that the contractor, we negotiated and came up with a $30,000 price tag on that. We had a few enhancements to the turf and track that I can show you, but we had probably four or five, about five change orders for that, which I will outline when we do the financials, but I will say, I think all in, it was less than $50,000 when you add up all the change orders, and some of them were great enhancements, so I'll share those with you. So that's where we are with our projects that are already being approved. Looking to fiscal year '27, if you go back to your budget book from last year, you'll see that what we estimated, or projects that we thought we were going to do in '27, were actually the rooftop units at Lenquist. With the rooftop replacement work that took place this summer, we decided it was more important for us to sort of slip '27 and '28, so your, last year, '28 was the roof restoration at the high school, so we're flipping those. We're doing the roof restoration for fiscal year '27, and we, we think we have enough life in the RTUs on Lenquist and some of the other HVAC equipments to push that off a year. I will say that we, I say, I call it harvesting, but not really harvesting. We had actually a lot of components that we had to make repairs for at the high school and our RTUs, that before those were taken down, we took those, those pieces of control panels, I think we had one good compressor, and we're holding on to those. We have, actually have a little inventory of repair, think, needs, so that we know that we can keep the easily, you know, living a little bit longer if we need to. So with that, we've already started with the consultant that helped us do the Lenquist and the middle school, he's already come up to sort of start the planning process for the rooftop restoration. The first thing we had to do is a infrared scan to make sure we're still a good candidate. You can't have moisture in your membrane of your roof of more than 25%. To be, if it's more than 25%, you're not a candidate for the restoration that we did, sort of that, you know, the paint, I'm going to call it painting, but they put down the mesh and the liquid. So we got that report back and we're good, which is really good, because it's a lot, as we've talked about this three years, two or three years ago, this is actually more sustainable, because they're not going to pull all the asphalt off, we're going to lay over it, so, and it's also, it's white, and so then you also have the heat and the sun. So I love how our roofs here look in the, in the Google Earth. Can't wait for this one to be the same. So, and with that, as you know, we have skylights in the library that we're constantly having leaking problems with, so while we're doing that, I think we're going to also include into the project to have those skylights replaced, and then, you may know, there's a planetarium up there that hasn't ever been used, I don't think. While we're at it, we're going to have that removed. So it's a, it's sort of a cleanup, do the roof and clean up a few things, so.
But not any way to have it repaired, so that it could be used?
No. Yeah, and there's really no, no desire from the, I don't think it's been used, I don't even know if it's really was used when it was built, to be honest with you. There was a flaw, I think, in the, the construction-
Right, I thought it could be used for safety reasons.
Yeah.
So there's not any, there wouldn't be any interest? Because I've, I've heard a lot of interest from kids. In fact, I heard some Boy Scouts talking about thinking if they could do their-
Yeah, I think it's too, I think they looked at that even before I got here, it's too much work to do to even get it to a point.
Got it.
The base, the, the structure that you're starting with is not, is not worth trying to move on.
Got it. In the meantime, though, we just got a gift from a family last year of a gorgeous telescope that the students are using, so it's not quite the observed, it's still super powerful.
Exactly. So it's a big unknown for us right now. We're going out the door early, and when I sent this out yesterday, I met with the director facilities, and we were- And when I sent this out yesterday, I met with the director of facilities and we were, we're going back and forth whether or not we were gonna put a million seven five or two million. I was feeling, I was feeling like positive that we, you know, could make everything in this world happen, the lower level, knowing that the towns are gonna start building their capital budget. I am gonna make an amendment before you vote on this tonight and put it back up to the two million. I slept on it and thought about it all day, and I just think it's safer to go up to a higher number. And if we come down, that's great. But I do think the million seven fifty could be right at maybe where it comes in, and I just never know how the bids are gonna come in. So I'm gonna recommend that we take that number up to two million. So that's the main number that you're voting on is the, you know, the version 1.0 placeholder for 27. You will see in the out years that we put the, 28 has the Lenquist RTUs and some other miscellaneous aeons. They're a little bit smaller version, and we have several of those. And so over the next, between 28 and 29, we're trying to replace all of those. And then when you get into 30, sorry, we get into fiscal year 30, we, it's so hard to say 30. 29, 30, you know, we, we have on our docket that maybe we need to start doing upgrades to our restrooms. And then the big investment too, we have some feel of this because we did Chicaring, or all the classroom floors here at the middle school. And we typically do those by wings. So again, those are placeholders. There's, there's a lot more classrooms here than there are at Chicaring. We sort of use those numbers. It looks like a big number. It's like 800,000 right now, but again, that's just a placeholder. And then it'll be time for us too, in 29 and 30, to probably repave our parking lots. And we do that in two phases as well. And then the boilers are finally coming back on in 31. So I think the key number is the project that we're gonna be marching forward with and doing bids for, so that we have those in place in March, that when you do your final capital vote in March, it's the final number that the towns know they'll have to fund through the IMA. And so that's the process that we're trying to, to work towards. Just to highlight a few other future projects that don't show up on the, the six-year plan but are on our minds and will have to decide how to, to move forward with them, is that we are, we have a wastewater treatment plant here, as you know. It's at its like 20-year mark. We have engaged our wastewater treatment plant, preventative maintenance company to do a 20-year sort of capital engineering study for us. I have the proposal for that. I haven't finalized it yet, but that'll give us more of a, a plan as to what we're gonna have to start replacing on that facility. It's not well described in the onsite insight, so it's best to go out to more experts. So, but that could be some substantial money at some point for projects. I think the next thing is campus-wide, some carpet replacement in our admin suites, central office, and our high school lobbies. How I see that playing out is potentially, depending on our financial results on some of these fiscal years, we will ask the town if we can fund those through E and D, because they're probably some of those smaller projects. And so that's, you know, we'll start getting quotes for those and depending on what our, and those are ones that we don't have to go out and do huge bids for. So that if we know in April, we have a surplus and the towns are okay with that, we can vote to use some E and D and take care of those that same summer. So that's, that's the vision for that. And then again, we are still having to think big picture about the towns courts. So now that we've got this done, we're gonna have to put our thinking caps on and move forward with the towns courts. So that's sort of a lot, probably more capital than you want to know in one night. But that sort of lays out, I think, at least for version 1.0, the things that we have on our plate to address. And again, we're doing this a little bit earlier than normal to accommodate the towns wanting to do the same thing they have to do with not only the schools, but with all their town buildings as well.
Can I just ask a general question, a little too granular?
Yeah.
So like, where do you come up with the number?
So we had a.
Prior to setting it out.
Yeah, so we had a study done, Louise, on all of our campuses for roof replacement. So we have that base number, and we know what it cost us to do this project. So we're sort of using the number we had. Well, that report was in 23, but we did this in 24. So I've added inflation to the number. But what I don't really know is the sky, like prices of the skylights. I don't think the planetarium is gonna be a huge cost, the skylights. I'm not quite sure what that's gonna entail. So that's the report. I would tell you, the report in fiscal year 23 that we had had the upper end of the high school at 1.1.
Oh, I see lots of blue running and jumping. They must have won. They broke the tie.
No, but that's.
They won.
Okay, because labor is a big issue.
Yeah.
Having quoted.
Yes, right. So no, so I put some hefty increases on that. So that's why I don't want to scare the towns with a big number. So I was feeling like I don't want to scare the towns. I went with a million seven, and then I was like, I think I have to go back up to the two million is where I started.
I think.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah.
No, okay.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And I always just, I, you know, it, it's just easier for the towns if you go down versus go up. And I, and I totally understand that. So I think that's, that's where we're going with that.
I really am paying attention.
A moment of joy, it's nice.
I think Sophie, which means we're.
We'll see, there you go.
Yeah.
Went down to the last minute then, huh?
Overtime.
Well, it wasn't overtime. Oh, wow. Okay, so that is, again, we'll, we'll have more opportunities. I will take you along this journey with us as we, you know, right now then we've got the infrared scan. We now have to hire a project manager architect to do the bit, the bit specs and such. And typically, the, the region covers that in their operating budget. But the other thing is the project management, I try, I'm gonna try to put some expenses in the price that we pass along to the town so that we're not absorbing that whole, that whole cost, but a piece of it. So in order to get moving along, we have to absorb the design piece of it. But we will, we're working with the same outside consultant who I, I do feel like knows his stuff, but he's hooking us up with everyone as we move along. So we will keep, keep you updated. But that, if you guys approve this tonight, then I will pass that along to both towns and they'll be ready to drop the numbers. And I told them, you know, the numbers weren't significantly different from what was in our five-year plan from last year, but that we are flipping the projects. And not that they care, they're really looking at the number. So.
All right, so we're ready to go. Does anybody have any more questions?
No.
No?
No.
No. I mean, it's a lot. I know the first time I saw that, I was like, whoa. Like the first one I saw at Sherburne, and it was, it was smaller than this. So it gets, you know.
Gets bigger when you come here.
It gets bigger, and it's, it's longer now. Because like you said, it's really a six-year.
Now they went six years.
Yeah, so it's a lot. My head kind of spins when I look at it, thinking, wow. And I feel like I'm not granular enough in my own life. There you go.
But as I said, these are numbers, are placeholders outside of that. So when I base it on the work we've already done, we have the onsite insight, but I've lost faith in their numbers. So that's why we're sort of using known projects and trying to go from there with that.
So should we call a vote on this now?
Mm-hmm, yes, yep. And then just make sure you amend it to the two.
Adjusted for the two million as opposed to 1.75.
Seven five, yep.
Right, that's what I was gonna say. So do I have a motion to approve the FY '27 capital plan that reflects the years 2028 through 2032 with the adjustment that in 2027, the number for the capital projects is adjusted for, to two million from 1.75 million? Jeff?
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And all, it's unanimous for the four of us that are here.
Thank you.
Okay, so anything else to talk, or is that?
I guess that's for me.
That's good, that's good. Well, at least I didn't have to learn circuit breaker tonight. Took me years to learn that, huh?
Well, I didn't have to laugh because the town Sherburne wanted to rename everything so it made more sense.
Oh, no.
We gotta stick with the lingo.
Yeah, I can't do anything. Okay, so the next thing, I'm already done, just now learning what I learned. The consent items that are in our, in your packet, there are three things, and we can vote on these all at the same time. And so one of them is the approval of the regional school committee minutes from October 7th, 2025. I read through them. I did not see anything that was incorrect, but if anybody else called something because it had noted who was remote, and it seemed as if the voting was correct. So have that. And then the other two items are approval of a high school's field trip, which is from Mr. Kaplan. This is going into Boston in order to do the Harvard Model UN program, which they do, and they usually do quite well. So that, that is something for a future date that we need to approve. And the other thing is approval for an overnight field trip for the divisionals cross-country meet, so they can stay overnight, so they can be fresh in the morning to win. So that's that. So if you all read that, does anyone have any questions, any adjustments, anything they want to?
Number three.
Okay, so with that being said, do I have someone to move to approve the consent items of the regional school committee minutes from October 7th, 2025, the high school field trips in the Model UN, and the approval of the cross-country field trip? Kevin?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second, Lindsay, any discussion? And all in favor? It's unanimous for the four of us. Okay.
Just a reminder for old members and an, and update for new members. So anytime there is an overnight field trip anywhere or a field trip out of state, you all have to approve it.
Yep.
Which is why we do. So hopefully they'll get some nice sleep, our track team, and do quite well. So the other things in there are informational items, the Dover School Committee Minutes, the Sherburne School Committee Minutes, the tech collaborative quarterly report, and the, the money on that was wild to me. That was, whoa, that made me, that made me tired to look at it. I mean, it's a huge collaborative, but I'm like, wow, it's a lot. And with that being said, we will not meet again until December 2nd of 2025. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, a motion to adjourn.
Second it?
Second.
Lindsay? There's some discussion there. All in favor? Okay, so we are adjourned at 7:13.